We'll call this meeting order. It's 4:08 PM on Wednesday, March 23rd. And if you want to do a quick roll call. Hi, Lou Corning, I'm here.
Here.
Matt Bullock. Matt, you might be muted. I think I see your number there, but. We can. Come back to that, I guess, if we need. And then we're still expecting. At least Cameron and Ethan, and I would think Hope unless somebody heard otherwise.
No, 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 otherwise updates from any of them.
Okay. Hey, Matt.
Hey, guys, I'm here. I'm here. I'm here, yeah.
Matt is here. Alright, so we do have a corner. Does anybody have any changes or additions to this agenda?
Nope.
Okay. None here. Then if everybody's had a chance to look at the prior meeting minutes, and there are no concerns about that, can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, unanimous. The minutes are approved, so we can dive right into our old business of building code adoption, just cashing out some final details. Believe we've done a pretty good job going through everything in there, so I think this is gonna serve more as a review of what we've done and just fine tunings in the language where we need to.
I think that sounds great. Look, if you want, I would just, with your permission, I'd like to go through and make sure. So my thought is on the revisions, still ask of staff that we just hit the highest parts of those, I think. You know, there are points in the minutes. I don't think that we need to worry too much about the, you know, we just talked about adopting, if that's okay. I guess first I'll stop and just ask if it's okay if we kind of go through the bullet points of remaining changes that aren't in the current draft, with the hope that I would be able to send those out in an email and just get consensus on them. Because I think they're, I think we've got a pretty good idea, and then if we just run through them, then, you know, I think staff will feel, I'll feel confident to go ahead and make those changes and send them out to everyone. So if that's okay, through those bullet points.
That sounds like a great idea. So do you want to pull that draft resolution up on your screen?
Or do you have it, Dan? Do you want to navigate it, or you want me to?
Oh, I can. Yeah, sure.
If you've got it pulled up right there, I can do it too, but.
See, share screen, is that what I need? Okay, and I need that screen. And share. Did it work?
Yes.
Okay, should, should be able to see Word document. Right now I'm on contractor registration form, is that what you can see?
That's what we can see.
Okay, so where did we leave off? Last time we just scroll back up, we had the snow load tables. Everything was fine there. We had the inspections, we talked about some of that. So back down to contractor registration, we had talked about that a little bit.
We go towards the minute outline, which you may or may not have done, Dan, but the first thing was the IRC appendix F for radon mitigation. So we had talked about, you know, the importance of requiring the radon drain. And so we had talked about the possibility of adopting that whole appendix, but we had also talked about did we want to make any changes to it? That's my recollection is, did we want to include it in its entirety? Dan, you had said that you were kind of unaware of any other jurisdictions that had, is my recollection. And so I just wanted to get some clear direction on the radon mitigation, or the radon appendix.
Yeah. First, first of all, where is that appendix? I'm scrolling around here.
Not, it's not currently.
Well, it's not showing up here yet, because we haven't.
We haven't adopted it yet.
Recently.
Oh, okay.
The, out of the IRC.
Yes.
Correct, that's what we're talking about, the radon appendix out of the IRC.
Okay, okay, so we go over here and appendix F, that's what we're talking about, alright, let me bring that up.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, radon control. Okay, so that's the appendix F, which is just lists all of the states and the counties. And scroll down here, a few definitions, diagrams of how to do it. Details for foundations. And that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, my recollection is that going through it like we did, I don't think there are any objections with anything. I questioned the the termination pipe height, but I think we're okay on that. Then we talked about location of power supply for, for future fans, and I think we found some reasonable accommodations, so that we should never have to mount a box on a roof, because there was some objection to that, so.
Okay.
Unless anybody else remembers something that was really offensive in that, I think I think we'd be comfortable adopting that in its entirety.
Okay, so, so Ann, you want to just, just make a section for that in the resolution then? Did we, I mean, we go back to our resolution and go up to the top and adoption of the codes IRC, including appendices E and G, so we would just say E comma F and G, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. I'll just email this to you when I'm done, then. Okay.
Yeah, not hearing any objections to needing to modify or adjust it, then we'll just include it. So if anybody objects to that on the board, let me know, but that will be staff's action, just, just as we've done here. Our next talking point was work exempt from a permit. Do, is there still any concern? You know, we're just gonna match them, we're gonna make sure that we match them everywhere. And that, you know, there were a couple places that we just needed to make sure that they align. But is there anything still outstanding in? You know, I think we've been very consistent throughout drywall installation under 200 square feet, window replacement not requiring change of headers, or structural members, which part are we, we're in IBC right now?
We are in the IBC right now, yes.
Okay. And I think in the IRC, we said a little bit more about.
Yeah, I'll go down there, IRC, and work exempt from permit, drywall installation. Less than, okay, so we added, underlined here, added less than 200 square feet in existing structures to match the 200 square feet in existing structures for insulation. Do you want to do that in the IBC too? Just, just add those words back up here. Right here, drywall installation under 200 square feet in existing structures. Was, do we want IBC to match? We're in the IBC, we're allowing insulation less than 200 square feet in existing structures. Drywall under 200 square feet in existing structures. In other words, if it's a new building, you need, you're gonna have a permit for the new building, so it seems like to say in existing structures makes sense, does that?
Yeah, hear from the board on that. I wanted to see something really quickly.
Hope Colitz, can you see that my screen? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You know, what you have, what you've got up, Dan doesn't match. I just want to stop just a second.
Do I have an old copy here?
And just make sure, so you're at.
I'm in IBC.
You're at 105.2.
Yeah.
Point two. So the draft I'm looking at has a 105, door and door frame replacement unless involving other structural changes, window replacement whereby replacing with code compliant windows and window frame replacement unless involving other structural changes, removal and replacement of exterior siding materials less than 200 square feet and installation, insulation, installation less than 200 square feet in existing structures.
Okay, this is.
Let me, I'm gonna email this one to you right now.
Yeah, sure, I'll just.
I think this is an older version.
Okay, okay.
Apologize, let's make sure we've, we're working from the right one.
Yep, okay, then, let's see here. I will get rid of this.
Apologize for being late, my class got out later, so.
Glad you're here.
That's right, glad you're here. Okay. Alright, it's coming right to you, because that, that was my pause, is that, I don't know if everybody else was pausing, but that looked a little different than where we landed in my in my notes.
Okay, sure, so.
And I'm, you know what, I'm just gonna forward this to everyone.
Okay, got it. And I'll bring it up. Okay, make it bigger. Boy, and go back to figure out how to share, share screen, that one. Share. Okay, can everybody see that now? Is it big enough? Is it too big? It's okay, alright.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, so, and just to go backwards one step, we went down here to the adoption of the codes a few minutes ago, and we put in, including appendices E comma F, oops, why, oh, how about I enable editing? Start again. E comma F and G, alright, that's where we're all in agreement, that's what had been wanted, okay? Going back to IBC, okay, here we go, following work will not require permit. Looks exactly the same as.
Why is it getting the replacement?
See, is, the heading of this is Lake County 2018 Draft Resolution dash 3.1.22.
Yep, that's what I have open, so.
Okay.
Something else. IBC, our IBC looks a little different than our IRC, I apologize, our IBC, so let's just, it, it, it says similar things, but let's make sure that the IBC shouldn't mirror, go on down, Dan. I think when you get down to 105.2, and there we go, you'll see that there is.
Okay. I do, yes, window replacement whereby installing code compliant windows that do not require change of headers or structural members. Okay, so we're good with that with the IRC, right, with the IBC, if you're gonna replace a window. We, you, you didn't want to copy that, or you did?
That's, that's our question, is, do you want that, the exact same? Work exempt from a permit, do we want that exactly the same in the IBC as well as the IRC? I'm anticipating you're going to say yes, but I just want to make sure that we kind of went back and forth on this several times, and so I just want to make sure they are exactly the same, and that the one that we wanted to reflect are the changes that we did in 105.2, in, in the IRC.
Yeah, just, yeah.
The deck information too.
Yeah, something is not right, hold on just a little.
I believe we got rid of any exemptions for decks, just because.
That last time, yeah.
I apologize for not being, I wanted to hurry up and get everybody together, but I'm feeling like let's see, so.
Exemption was 30 inches or less.
Well, let me, just while she's looking, me throw the code up here, because there is a section in chapter 105, so that is right here. 105, work exempt from permits, and what it says in item 10, decks not exceeding 200 square feet, not more than 30 inches above grade at any point, and not attached to a dwelling, and do not serve the exedor. So if it meets all of those, they're exempt already in the code.
We moved decks because we, so actually, we previously had had decks, and we removed them because we felt the exemption was always already strong enough within the existing code. So it used to say decks under 30 inches.
Okay, so nothing new needed, no new amendments for that, we're good with that, okay.
Correct, so the one that we have is absolutely right, and the reason Dex is not there is because it was previously, but after we reviewed this, we felt the board felt, they were confident with the exemption that exists within the code itself. So we moved to Dex, and that's why they're not there. You do have the correct draft, we are working from the correct.
Okay.
Checking here, but we are actually, this was our, after our back and forth and looking what was exempt already in the code, these are the ones that we landed on. The only difference is that we have a little bit of a difference and distinction between the IBC and the IRC. And what I'm asking is, we want the IBC to reflect the changes that we made in the IRC.
And we are looking at the IRC right now. So you've got 200 square feet of drywall and 200 square feet of siding and 200 square feet of insulation, so I think the difference was number 12, right?
And the reason that we did that with Hope's help is that we didn't want a conflict in the energy code, if somebody was putting in non-compliant windows, right, so if we wanted, then we'd have to go in and give them a break on the windows and the energy code if we just exempted all windows. So we would have had a conflict within, and we would have had to go in and adjust another chapter. So that's why we put in there that when they're installing code compliant windows. And that is the, the reason that we added that in.
So Hope Medina, does, does this also work in the IBC? Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to put this item number 12 in, into the IBC portion as well?
I, residentially, you're not doing anything that's too kind of crazy, but when you start talking commercially, typically you run into a little bit more complexity. So I, I mean, if you want it to be in the, the on the commercial side. It might not, it might not be that, well, no, actually, because when you start talking on the commercial side, you got a lot more involved with it, you got the maximum air leakage, you got your solar heat gain coefficient, you got your projection factor. There's an awful lot more involved on the commercial side than residentially. But i- if you want to do that on the commercial side, I just, I don't know that I would on the commercial side of things.
So right now, this is the IBC, everyone, item number two, window replacement not requiring change of headers or structural members. And the IRC said window replacement whereby installing code compliant windows that do not require change of headers or structural members. So the difference is this installing code compliant windows.
And that meaning, being exempt from a permit, so.
They'll have to be egress, they still have to meet that, so, but doesn't that have to be true in commercial?
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we did want to put the window exemption in the IBC, I would match that language, but I think Hope raises a good point that could be a slightly dangerous thing to do. I guess I'm just thinking of the buildings that are likely to do that kind of thing, I'm not too worried about it. But you know, under that language, you could replace all the windows in a you know, 50 unit building. And as long as you weren't changing headers and claimed to be meeting code, you wouldn't wouldn't require any inspections, that's
Yeah.
That's the case you need to be wary of.
Yeah, well, if you're changing a basement window, you still, you know, you're not really changing the header, but you still have to meet the 44 height.
The egress, maybe you just need to remove window replacement from that, I don't know, for any commercial.
I think we probably should, I.
You go back up.
I would agree with that, I think that's probably a smart move on the commercial side.
So just replace number two in the IBC from the window exemption. Because of all of, you know, just because of all of those reasons. That, you know, if you're gonna, okay. So commercial window replacement does require a building permit, therefore. Because there's nothing within the existing code that makes exemptions from it, are there? Are there specific parameters within the existing, under, under 105? In the 18.
IBC.
In the IBC.
Okay, let's go here, 105. Permits work exempt. Electrical, gas, mechanical, plumbing, oh, well, it wouldn't be there, would it, Hope? It would be in the IECC. Is that right?
Yeah, it would, well, it would fall under the, probably IEBC, but then it would more than likely refer you over to the IECC as far as complying with the energy component of it.
Okay, I'm pretty lost.
There, as far as an alteration, right, on the commercial side, out of the energy code. You know, it says, if it's an alteration, basically it needs to comply with the as if it was new construction, and the exemptions do not include fenestration, except for storm windows being installed over existing fenestration. But otherwise, it would be required to comply.
Okay, so this C501 in the IECC, alterations, repairs, additions, change of occupancy, relocation of existing buildings shall comply with the provisions for alterations, blah, 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 of the IBC, the IEBC, the fire code, fuel code, mechanical plumbing, property maintenance, private sewage. Oh, it's just saying it has to comply with those other codes. Okay.
We do have a a line for window replacement in our resolution under the IEBC. So that's something to consider, because someone was working in an existing commercial building, this is where they'd be looking, wouldn't it?
Right, so, so not having it in the IBC, but it's in the IEC, the, that that would be, that's where our trade-off is at, but not in the IBC.
Right, it seems like striking it the way I did there is the answer in the IBC.
Okay. Does, does that make sense to everyone?
It does.
Great.
Awesome. I think that just about covers it, because I think then we're, we're consistent with the 200 square feet in all situations. And the only difference between the IRC and the IBC was the window exception, but it still is addressed in the existing code, in the existing building code, so. I think you've got consistency there, then work without a permit, is, is that agreeable to everyone?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, so that brings me on my list of staff items to appendix A.
Okay.
Cost, our cost sheet.
Let me go down and find appendix A.
And before jumping there, could we, could we just talk about something on the, on the energy codes, both in the IRC and the IECC?
Absolutely.
So I've been working on something to plug in for the window U values that we've discussed. I looked at trying to match some language from 2021, but it just seemed like it'd be cumbersome, because that's an exception for above 4,000 feet, which is a given if it's in Lake County, so it seems strange to say there's an exception for anything above 4,000 feet, when that's, that's just how it is here, you can't go that low. So I mean, the, I feel like the simplest thing we could do would be to to just refer to that table, which is, I pulled that up.
Is that the one I've got up, or no?
No. I believe it's a little lower down, let's see, it's table We don't have anything in our resolution yet.
Okay.
Now, that's on the IRC, it's, I'm sure it's different on the energy code.
And 1102.2?
Yes.
And.
I don't know, no, sorry, 1102.1.2.
This one here.
Yep.
Let me make that a little more viewable, let's see. Okay.
So in our resolution, I would propose, and I don't know how to word it, since it's in the table, but something along the lines of fenestration, U factor value shown for climate zone seven and eight shall be changed from 0.30 to 0.32. And then if we need any, any sort of backup on why are we doing that, to justify it to the state or anything, I think we could have something saying, you know, in in line with note F1 in 2021, IRC for elevations above 4,000 feet. It gets a little cumbersome, so it might not be necessary, but I guess I'd like to defer to Hope Medina on that, if, if you have any thoughts, or if you've seen anybody else do this, and.
I, I muted myself instead of unmuting myself there. I, I can't say that I have seen anybody go back to the .332 for the seven and eight at the moment. The only thing that I would, I, I don't think that it would be a bad thing per se, I mean, I don't think, I mean, they put it in the 21 for, for a reason. The only caveat that I want to bring up with that is, as long as they're going truly prescriptive, and they're going with the insulation fenestration option of the prescription, prescriptive path. I mean, they put it in the twenty-one for, for a reason. The only caveat that I want to bring up with that is, as long as they're going truly prescriptive and they're going with the insulation fenestration option of the prescription, prescriptive path. They could do that. They can't do it if they're utilizing the U factor alternative or the total UA, which would be res check, because res check in their software, it's still going to require the point three oh, so. That, that's something just to. Keep in mind.
A- and you're also going to be out of compliance with the state law, right, that says you're, you can't be weaker than.
Yep.
I, I think Luke is right. I don't know in this instance that. It would necessarily be looked at as being less energy efficient, because you could make the case that you are borrowing from the twenty twenty-one addition. And utilizing that value for it and that exception because of your elevation, I think. If push came to shove, you could make that argument. And it's not across the board, you're not doing it necessarily across the board, because it truly would only go into effect for those that are doing the. Insulation fenestration option of the prescriptive path, so.
And do you think that would mean you'd need to be noted that way, or would that just be something that have to be addressed on a case by case basis?
I, I, I would just, just for a little bit of clarification, we could, we can put this table in the resolution and, and. So I'm just thinking about how, when you say case by case basis, and maybe Hope can articulate that better for you, but my thought is that we would take this and put the table in the code. And then seven and eight, and, and then if there needs to be any. Rationale that, that brings forth, um, borrowing it from the twenty twenty-one based on elevation. We could do that. So I'm, I'm just thinking about the logistics of, of, of making this available. Through the prescriptive.
That sounds like a great idea to me, and I think it wouldn't hurt just to have this. Right, right in your face in the resolution, so that it's easy for people to find too, and that it's accurate for, for us.
And then just cross out that, that one number and write in zero point three two, a- and that's the only change, right?
And I even think if we, if we felt like it'd be helpful, we could put a, a little note there on that. Zero point three two that says something along the lines of.
Matching the twenty twenty-one.
This is.
Well, what I would, yeah, what I would do is. He, I think, you know, putting the table in where you're just showing the, the seven and eight, obviously, but in leaving the fenestration U factor as the point three oh. Adding a footnote to that number and then taking the actual footnote from twenty twenty-one and copy and pasting it in here. Because it'd be, it would be almost the same format as what you see in the twenty twenty-one, so it just, you know. Increases your, your evidence, your case, if something ever were to come. You know.
Good idea.
By from the state, it, it's, you're really keeping it in line with it.
Dang, she's pretty smart.
No.
That makes sense. Yeah, the only, the only reason I wasn't sure about that is because. It does, it has a few other exceptions for different situations and. You know, it's showing for anything above four thousand feet, but that's the default here, since. We don't have anything below that, but I think if, if that's the best way to just show that we've done our homework here, and we're not just making this up to weaken the code, then.
Okay, so Hope, can you, can you send Anna a, a copy of the revised table and footnote and everything that she could paste into the document?
Yes, I'm going to work on that. As we speak, I'm going to do my best, because I don't get to copy and paste out of IQS for the twenty twenty-one, I have to do it out of.
Yeah, PDF.
Yeah, well, out of, uh, online, so.
And then where, where do we want that placed? Uh, let's see, so this is chapter eleven, energy, this is table eleven oh two, one, two. So it's going to be the very first thing under a chapter eleven, energy efficiency title then.
Correct, and then, because you also have, and correct me if I'm wrong. You also have all of this duplicated for the residential IECC.
Yes.
Because you want, because there's going to be people who will look at the IECC for the energy and those that'll come out of chapter eleven, if they're not identical.
Okay, so I'm in right now, what's up is the IRC part, but, okay, so we also then go down to mechanical plumbing, fuel, gas, fire. Existing, where, where did energy go to, to, oh, did we?
We didn't make any amendments to it.
Oh, that's right, because it's a state law, okay, right, so that means we need to insert one of these numbers, probably at the end is the easiest one. As the last code, and so seven is IEBC, and yeah, so it's going to be number eight then.
Okay.
That will be the international. Energy conservation code twenty eighteen edition.
Yeah, my suggestion is, and, and maybe duplicating is not the route to go, what you could do is just. Delete the residential provisions altogether out of the IECC, and then you just refer to chapter eleven. That way, over time, you don't have a divergence of the IECC says this, but the IRC chapter eleven says this.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. So, if, if that gets done and. Board gets to see it and say, yay, barely, then we're covered on that one, Luke.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
One more thing in the energy code, Zoe, that we discussed, but I haven't seen anything come through necessarily. Um, and I wish I had something in front of me, but felt like in the twenty twenty-one, there is. There was a little bit more language on what happens if, if you fail your.
Lower door test.
Lower door test, yeah.
So, um, I just, I'm just gonna pop in there real quick, Luke, so, um, Hope and I have been working, I think, I thought I'd kind of shared this with the group. But I think what we're looking for is not to put that within the resolution, but, um, to make that a policy internally that we follow the twenty twenty-one, and Hope and I have been working on that together. That if that happens, if you exceed the air exchanges, then there is a list of items, a laundry list of compliance items that you call for an inspection on. And Jerry comes and, and verifies that you have, um, done those items. Um, and so I'm, I'm sure Hope can elaborate on that a little better, but our, we have been working on that and, um. In the form of a policy versus in the actual code, um, or in the amendment, so it's a, a, a policy by which we address. Um, when you don't pass the lower door test, or you exceeded the air exchanges, then there's a list of. Mitigating factors that have to be done, and then you have to call for Jerry to inspect those, um, in order for us to, to move forward.
Okay, yeah, sorry if I missed something there, that sounds like a great plan, though.
Okay, and, and Hope, if you've got anything on that, I, if I, if I illustrated that properly.
Oh, yeah, no, no, you did. Um, the only thing I wanted to say is, because I know Luke, you had sent that over, but. The section that you were looking at referred to the commercial side. So what was in there is not necessarily applicable to the residential components, but the concept. Um, we did go ahead and, and, and use and, and monkey around and come up with a, a list, so.
Is anybody there, is Jerry verifying, or Jerry, are you verifying blower door results? Are you actually doing tests, or it's just the third party and we take them at their word?
We, we're not requiring blower door results right now.
Okay, Hope, you explain, Medina, explain that to me, you know, um, home Medina, or. Other hope, I'm sorry, hope for homes, um, you're really familiar with that, so I think just to make sure that anyone, and maybe everyone is. But, um, hope there, there is a Medina, there is a report that staff can ask for. And so that we can document the file, correct?
Yes, yes, um, if a, if a blower door test is being performed, which I know that it was deleted, but if they do it. Then there is a report that is provided that would. That, when this adoption happens, that would be required to be produced for your CO.
Yeah.
But I, I'm just saying, is. Okay, well, is anyone double checking it? How is it QC'd? That's all I'm wondering, um.
I don't think it has been up to this point, right? We've required them, but we haven't re, we haven't reviewed the results yet, which is part of the change in this adoption, is, am I, am I correct on that?
Right, right, and I think so, um, my, my thought on that, Hope, and, and it may be a bit naive, but based on my conversations with Hope Medina. Is that that'll be part of the training for staff, so when we get those reports in, um, there should be some good verifiable data about the individual build that would be hard to manipulate. And, and so that we'll be able to identify that it was done. On, on the exact property, um, and, um, and again, these might be naive thoughts, but that was in my discussion with her, I thought, oh. Our checks and balances on this is that when we get those reports, it'll be, there'll be enough, um, data information, A, to identify it was done on, on the subject property, and then we would be able to verify the air exchanges.
Um, so just, just my input, I ran a contractor program in the Bay Area covering a huge amount of areas, and. Everybody lied about their blower door reports, so. You know, I mean, it's really easy, it's hard to get a building tighter or find those at final blower door, and people fudge the numbers, and it is not that easy. To verify that, just looking at the numbers. I, I, you know, so what we did is we did, you know, a percentage of the tests that were submitted, we would go out after every fifteen tests, we would go out and retest one of those. Um, I'm not saying that that's what we propose here, but that's pretty much every time I QC'd a blower door, it was wrong. I'm just telling you, and the duct testing was even bad, and duct testing is required in twenty eighteen code as well, if. Uh, any part of the duct system, including the air handler, is in a combustion closet that's vented or in the garage. And we didn't even, we've kind of blew over that too, so I'm just curious about if those things matter, or.
Well, there's classes available, which, you know, we could certainly, uh, make available, uh, for inspectors and everybody in the office that would want to take it. Not that you'll get everything perfectly from a class, I, I never did, but I mean, you know, uh, that's got to help, I would think.
But wait, so what I can't say is, oh, I'm sorry.
So the equip used to do the blower door test doesn't like timestamp, date stamp, all, you know, it doesn't.
A photograph does, but we're not requiring that, and, and the certificates that I produce for new construction. I just put in, making sure my stuff's calibrated, serial number, uh, the test, the date, the, uh, you know, temperature outside, the, uh, altitude. Being at, all of those things, but. I don't know if anyone's looking at it or.
Yeah, and who's, who, what mechanism, uh, proves that people rely on.
Remember that the blower door tests have to be performed in accordance with ANSI, ResNet, ICC three eighty. ASTME C, uh, E seven seventy-nine or ASTME eighteen twenty-seven, and they have a whole list of what the testing procedures are. And so, I mean, there, there are a lot of checks and balances that are already incorporated in, between that standard and what the code. Does required, and I can tell you that other jurisdictions that have been, um, requiring, you know, blower door tests for a significant amount of time, they aren't going back and. Rechecking, um, because, one, the building department doesn't have the equipment to go out and, and do the blower door test, plus, they, they aren't going to have the, the time to be able to go out and. And verify. Now, there are measures within it, because I believe it does state that. And let me look to see if it changed or not.
I got it.
But it does state that it's a, an approved third party.
Right, it has to be someone who's, uh, certified or whatever, right? I've, I've had to turn them down before for that. Yeah, right there, and a exception, and approved third party independent from the installer.
We should state what approved means, and what qualifies as approved, BPI certified, HERS certified. You know.
Um, it's actually in the code for in definitions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It is.
Do you like?
Yeah, approved is acceptable to the code official, so the code official determines whether or not, um, they are approved, and then if it's an approved agent. Um, it's an established and recognized agency that is regularly engaged in conducting tests, furnishing inspection services, or furnishing. Uh, product certification where such agency has been approved by the code official, so. Um, the code official can ask for qualifications and determine whether or not they're going to accept the results from whoever is attempting to do the testing.
So standard policy by building department that says we accept blah, blah agencies.
Great.
Would, would be okay.
We should put that in there. Right now, we don't have that. What agencies are we accepting, or is, is it you submit it, and then Jerry tells us, I don't know if that's an official certification from there, right, is it an aftermath, or is it prior? Because there's really few certification companies that. Produce blower door certification.
So Hope, what I would suggest is, is there's enough in here, and if, um, I would absolutely, um, welcome, um, an email with suggestions of who. That we can create that, because this to me is a policy item and not a regulation item, and so if, um, you know, anyone that, that feels that, you know, they're qualified in this area. To provide guidance to the code official on who should be approved, and, you know, I would just encourage. The Board of Review, you know, to, to send that input, and we can make, we can create an internal policy about who should hit that threshold.
It's, well, there's only two organizations, BPI and the HERS Resnet program, that's it.
So, is there, is there a reason that both of those aren't acceptable?
They are, I believe they should be, but I, I don't know, I would ask Jerry.
Well, no, I, I think the code official gets to make the decision.
Right.
Yeah, that was the end's decision.
Did we have, I don't know who that is, so is that you?
Oh, that's Ann.
Okay, all right.
This is, this is Jerry, but that's Ann's decision.
Okay, well, those are the only two, uh, programs that provide training and certification in blower door and duct testing.
So, that, that seems like an easy.
Definition. And I do have a, um, list of companies in Colorado that are performing. The testing requirements, and so. I'm happy to provide that, and I have a link that you can go on and check their standing with, uh, uh, BPI, so.
Oh, that's great. I mean, that sounds like a, a great checks and balances, but it's certainly something that needs, needs, um, to be considered. Since this is new, but it sounds like there's a, there's some great checks and balances in there for us.
The only other thing I'd ask on this topic is, um, we've touched on it a little bit, but we want to allow, um, builders to perform their own blower door testing. The language up here, kind of right in the middle of page, shows we're required by the code official, and approved third party independent. Shall inspect both.
That doesn't include.
I guess that's not actually blower door.
An in-house tester, so that's, that's, we should talk about that, that's a difference. That's not third party, if it's someone that receives financial benefit from their employee, of the person that installed the work.
Right, I mean, it does say we're required by the code official, so with that in mind.
Yeah, it's Ann's choice. Like Ethan, Ethan owns downward construction, he's BPI certified, he's qualified to do blower door test, but he's not a third party. So he's a great example. So he's a great example of how he has been trained thoroughly. And I know because he sat in my classes. That he knows how to handle a blower door and do those tests, but he's not third party. So we have to figure out. If that, you know, is a distinction. Same with Luke. I don't know if you're BPI certified, but.
No, we have Dan at the company who is.
Hope and Dan, let me understand this a little better. This is an exception. So this is when at the discretion of the code official. We can say that we want a third party, but typically if somebody holds these certifications, they can do the test. This is when at the discretion of the code official. There's a situation where it should be, we want to have the ability to bring in a third party independent. And inspector, correct?
That's how I read it. And I think that's sufficient.
Where required by the code officials, so.
It makes the exception and where, you know, yeah, right. So we're. Required. But if someone is well qualified, like the Ethan situation, then that is. I, I believe that should certainly be acceptable.
But you're not going to have them do their own work, right?
Yes, that's the thing. They're doing the work and the blower door test on the work they just did.
So I've asked this question a couple of times and my understanding was that if they are certified, they can.
It's different everywhere. In, in San Francisco, you weren't allowed to. We needed a third party because so many people were just faking it to pass. And putting down numbers that seem correct, just looking at it. But unless you redo the test, you don't really know.
Seems like the fox watching the hen house.
It's really true. A lot of people are honest too, so I get it.
I'd probably be against it, except that the limited resources for doing it.
Right.
I'd hate to see someone like Ethan, you know, have to shop it around and pay a bunch more for something that he can do really well. But yeah, I do think that we need that protection, which I feel is in, in the code here of. If there's any lack of faith whatsoever in, in that person, then. The code official has the authority to say, no, not this time.
Well, lack of faith is a little big, but I mean, you know, how do you know, well, I'm just saying if they don't like you. I don't know. I, I, yeah.
You could also create it as a policy. That might be the best way. That way it's not necessarily within your ordinance, but it's still. Applicable on how you're going to proceed with it.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. Polish, building departments always have a few sheets of policies available to the public if asked. And, and they just talk about how we're going to make decisions about things. That we've adopted. So this document is the adoption ordinance. How that gets. Implemented is in a policy.
Sounds like a great idea.
Perfect.
That would give us a little flexibility, I think, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting close to the end of my time, but, but maybe we're about done. Luke, you had a couple of things there. That you've brought up that were new. And I think we've got those covered. Was there anything else? Or do we go to the, to the appendices at the end?
I think we're ready to move on to those.
Okay.
So that would be, take us back to appendix A, which is just the fees. And all that I had that are the all that I recall that we needed to do on that was I just, I just needed to do a couple of modifications. Like right at the very top to just say that this would be an annual, annually updated. Fees consistent with the price index. Yeah, so I just need to modify that. And that was the only recollection that I had.
I think there was something about for labor that we were trying to make that a little clearer. Didn't we talk about that the last meeting, the for labor?
We talked about it. I think that, you know, we had said. But I didn't, I didn't, I know that we had some discussion, but I didn't have a change moment in or. You know, it's, it's that you bring forth the material cost and, and material costs, not including things that are covered. Of course, through your mechanical plumbing and electrical permits. But just the material cost of, of remodel. And then we multiply that to for, by two for the valuation. So very, very, very best. Basic cost and labor and materials kind of equation.
We said and labor, not for labor.
We multiply it by two for, to, to consider the labor cost. So we. We asked for the applicant to provide the material cost. We multiply it by two to come up with a valuation.
Oh, okay.
Yes, to include labor in valuation.
Right, but, but what we asked for from the applicant is just their material.
Right, right. It was very typical. Most cities do that in a remodel. Tell me how much your materials are. I'm going to double it. And that's going to include now the labor for a total value.
What I had was the only revision to that because and, and appreciate that support on that. So those were the only things that we had. The other was just a temporary, the temporary certificate of occupancy, putting that back to the amount. That we had. We, we talked a lot about that. I think that we landed on. You know, that will, as much as, as often as possible, we'll be pulling things and putting them on a different permit. And leaving the temporary certificate of occupancy at the same amount, but we would do it for a ninety day instead of a thirty day. So I think that everything else we were leaving the same on appendix A, appendix E.
Oh, yeah, this is the one where we, okay, we're, we're going to get rid of this whole thing.
Yeah, we're deleting.
Gone. Let's. Reject the deletion, reject the insertion, reject that. Just same as it used to be. That's what it is at this right now. No, no change.
Right.
Okay, appendix C stays the same, schedule of inspections.
We did just add in that insulation inspection. Oh, we took off the window. We decided not to do prior to the window energy stickers being removed. I think that we actually ended up not doing that.
Remember that as well. And roofing, I can't remember what we did with the flashing. Shall be made after the underlayment has been installed.
And I think we left that.
Okay. So roof, roof, midroof, Jerry, shall be made after the underlayment and flashing has been installed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, but usually with the midroof, it's kind of an in process.
It is, yeah.
So I mean, if they've got.
Little bit of judgment.
If they're doing it right, then I tell them to continue.
Right, exactly. That's, that's how we do it.
So I have something regarding. Appendix E, but I'm not sure why, because.
I think it was just some minor cleanup on the formatting, like. I think in, in some translation, yeah, it turned into so instead of fifty.
So I'm going to back that up and hit five, delete zero, so that everyone knows what that is.
That minor down at the bottom.
This one down at the bottom was simply an update of the ASE standard from the O two to the sixteen. And it's the standard that they use for this. So it's just updating the standard.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, so I'll just. Except on there. Okay, F contractor registration.
So we had a lot of discussion about this. And so this is one of the things I'm going to send you a policy on. The one thing that, that I learned at the conference and I think from some of you is that. You know, these are, once you pass them, you have them. And so when we start talking current. That brings up a lot of questions. So I will like, I'd like to send over to everyone. Just where, you know, so we'll have the policy on blower door testing, the policy on the mitigating factors. In the event that you don't. Meet the air exchange. Pass on that. And then the policy on certification. And I think the thing that I hadn't considered is that. I didn't realize the structure of the licensing a little bit. And I have a better understanding now that once you get those. You may have to do continuing education, but, but they don't have an expiration date.
Right, right. And that is how it's done. Every jurisdiction I've been with and they, they may have tested a long time ago and they're good on the O three code. And everybody goes, what? O three? And they go, yeah, but he's been taking CEUs all along the way and, and, you know. Otherwise, it's not good anymore. So he, there, there is up to date as, as the inspector who took his IRC test back on the O three. And has been getting CEUs along the way, you know.
Perfect, yeah. So I think hopefully that will relieve some of the questions about it. It's because I. For that exact, I have a better understanding of that now. And also in that policy, I'll address. And I'm welcome to please send in ideas on it because it can all, it can all be. Changed and modified, you know, what a reciprocal license would look like, some ideas of what that would be.
And we also have a pathway for people who may have gotten a contractor license in another state and have been doing. Work here in Lake County where nothing is required. So they don't have CEUs. They're not able to justify that. So maybe there is a update test or something that can be produced, you know, once a month, one day a week. People can make it, do it to qualify, just something to get, we're assuming everybody's working in an area where. They, contractors license is required. They're updating it. They're getting current. They're, no, and that's not happening here. And it hasn't happened here ever.
Well, you would only reciproc, sorry, go ahead, Ann.
We know, but now it is. And so, you know, sometimes that threshold may just be getting, you know, the, the ICC contractor license. But, but your good points, Hope, and, and so we'll work on that policy.
For somebody who's, you know, most of the state doesn't require a license. How does that work for a guy coming from Rocky Ford, comes to Leadville and, but he's been building houses for twenty-five years.
He's got to get a license.
Contractor.
You know, I, 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 yeah, I, I think that. Given the amount of members of the public that have been in here. And been beside themselves and have had incredible financial losses. I, I just think that we have to have some kind of.
Right, I'm worried that they have to go elsewhere. Are we going to be providing it from the Lake County office? Or we're just saying, find it somewhere and show us what you got.
Well, the ICC can be, you can test, if you have a camera with, or if you have a laptop with a camera. You can test from the comfort of your own home.
Yep.
So it's not, it's not, you know, I, we're going to be giving all kinds of directions on and information on how to do this testing. Through the ICC, but you can do it from the comfort of your own home. So, you know, we, the septic installer and inspector requirement has changed a couple of years ago. And requires certification. And same with those, you know, it's going to, I liken it to, you know, what, what. That industry decided to do. And, and that hasn't seemed overly onerous, so. Access to it is pretty easy.
We can thank COVID for that.
COVID definitely allowed that because you weren't able to do virtual ICC testing before COVID.
And I think now we can, so hallelujah.
And, and all we, all we got to do at the building department is, is tell them, here's the website that you go to and there's all the information, how to take that test. And go for and have fun. Yeah, okay, that is the end of the document that I have.
So my follow-up is that I'm going to, I'm going to work with Hope on. In one, one oh two point, one point two, the table. And the window. The menstruation prescriptive path. And so she and I will work on that. The policy items that I'm ministering over are blower door testing. The, and then the policy to mitigate lower door test failures and then policy on certification. And so those are, and then I'll send over a clean version of the resolution. To make sure that everyone feels like we were at where we're at with those minor changes along with the policies. And so expect that, give me a week to get that to everybody. And then the next, my next thought that I'd like to talk about this evening is just the public engagement piece. How we move this once we've got everything gelled and ready to go. We take it out to the community, get input. Filter questions, those kind of things. And then we prepare to take it for adoption to the board. Oh, and the other piece, the other piece that I want to let everyone know. That we are fortunate to have Hope. Working with me to help kind of shepherd our community. I've been looking at the Eagle County model of how that they have a robust education and engagement with the community and staff. And adopting their twenty twenty-one code. And I'm hoping to bring something very similar to our community. And there may be other communities that kind of want to join in, but, but addressing it under the two thousand eighteen. So I've shot all those ideas over to Hope and she's been amazing to come back. And, and say that she does think there'll be an opportunity for us to work with SHMS Coda. And get those opportunities onboard for our community so that we could do something very similar for engagement. And I think so first, taking the proposed resolution to the public with the reliance. That we will be coming onboard with all of these opportunities for education opportunities to come in. And, and really have a deeper understanding of it as we look to start administering it. I had asked Tim at the beginning of the meeting, I know this is a little beyond where we hope to be. But I would like to set a goal of taking this to the board of May second and using April. As our month for just wrapping, like in a week, if I can get this to you in a week, then we are going to be hitting the very first, first part of April. Making sure that everyone feels confident about the resolution where we're at. And then the month of April being where we go out to the public, hopefully maybe one to two times. And finding an opportunity, I would set up a venue and a way to do this. It will probably be a hybrid is what I'm thinking. Part Zoom, part in person, maybe at the college, maybe at city hall. But a good, nice, big venue where we can have good audio and engagement, both hybrid. To be there live and then, you know, have the board available to answer questions that the community might have. And as well as, as well as the decision makers. If they would like, I'd like to have them be able to be invited to that. So if they have any questions, we can vet all of those. And then be ready to feel very confident that May second, we, I would be taking a resolution with an adoption. So that starting that, the first of May, we're going to be administering the eighteen code. Those are kind of lofty goals. I'll be very honest, but I'm really hopeful that, that, that's a reasonable thirty day timeframe in there. And that May second would be our, our goal date of having this to the board. I'm seeing heads shaking.
Yes, makes sense.
Great, great.
What does the process look like for county commissioner approval, board approval?
Prove by resolution and, and we're not like the city where we have to have several readings. So we take that I will be preparing a staff report and inviting all of the electeds. Well, obviously, since we also administer the city building permits as well, and we have an IGA with the city. We'll be inviting all of those folks into, to just make sure that they don't have any questions. So I'm hoping the public engagement process, we may find, I'm going to kind of go out and find out if city council. And the board of county commissioners would like their own opportunity. For, you know, kind of a public work session, or if they would be fine to just be included in the public engagement. So I will know that, I would think within the next week. Work with Tim to kind of see what the board would like and the Lori, the new city administrator. Work with Tim to kind of see what the board would like and the Lori, the new city administrator. Administrator to see what city council would like. And so I should be able to come back with some great information to the board about here's a proposed location. And here's how we're going to market the engagement and and if it's going to be joint or if the electeds would like to have something separate. Before we take it to resolution, but on May second, it would be hoping to create the space to feel very confident. That what we're bringing forward to them would be adopted at that meeting and that we've answered any questions in this next month that they might have. I think a big one will be that, you know, they'll be, I think they'll be relieved and excited to hear that we have the educational piece coming. Following right behind it.
Anne, how long is your timeframe for the effective? Do you have it already established? That, you know, is it sixty days, ninety days from?
We, let's see, no, we do not. Good question. I think that what we are hoping is that it would be a pretty short window. That I would I would propose something fairly short within the resolution.
And don't forget you need copies of the twenty eighteen codes in the office or the county clerk.
Yep, we've got them. John is creating a great web presence where he has a direct link to the free versions of the code online. He can go in. Had lots of great ideas from the conference and so John has already got a web page ready to roll out. That will not only have the resolution immediately available, but have all of those direct links. So that they can immediately see the code for free. You know, that's always kind of a pushback that we always get. So we really want to highlight to everyone that if they have an internet connection. You can see the code for free, so.
Well, and so when the last time we did this. It seemed like there was a lot of after the code was actually adopted by the county commissioners. There was a lot of residual pushback at that point and we actually, I think we had a few meetings. To diffuse whatever basically deny. You know, proposed changes after the code was adopted. So I don't know if there's any way to avoid that sort of. Yeah, situation.
Did you guys do, do you remember, thank you too for, you know, you're probably the only one with us that has done this before in Lake County. That's a really great knowledge that you have. Did you do public, you know, was it just your regular meetings?
I think there was a lot of stuff went through like public notice and stuff like that. And, you know, just word spread through the department and stuff like this to to get people engaged. To where they could review the code and see what was good about it, what and then public input session. At that point, once that was through, then they could go, then we could go adopt it and pass it along.
Yeah, you always want to have roundtable discussions with the users of the code, local contractors or whatever, something that I mentioned to Paul and he said, oh, we we've already done all that. I said, oh, okay, because that's really important because that's where questions and sometimes frustrations come up. And it gives us all an opportunity to attend and say, well, here's some answers for that and thank you for that feedback. Let's make a tweak. And and then when it comes to the board, looking at it, people aren't showing up en masse at the board with their frustrations. We've already dealt with that.
Yeah, that's why I think this, you know, I'm hoping thirty days is enough to, you know, have several if we need it. Does anyone know, I I had a call into Jack Saunders. Is the Home Builder Association, are have they, are they continuing to be active? Did that kind of just fall apart a little bit?
There is nothing really going on with that now.
Okay, I was laughing at hopes.
I don't know if anyone's spoken to Dan Northcraft lately, but he's got a pretty good handle, you know, finger on the pulse of. Some of the building community that that isn't represented here, so. Be a good one to spread the word. He was taking a lot of the role on the HBA when it was more active, so.
Yeah, and he used to show up at the board meetings too. So maybe that was the public that Paul was talking about.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, we've got our our contractor list of everybody that's registered. So we're going to start heavy hitting out information to them. I know email is not always the best, but. But we're that the first place we're going to start, we're going to have it on the website. And then, you know, we're going to have lots of information in the office so that when people are coming in, we're going to do as much campaigning. I think that's the next piece for staff to really start focusing on is how we create the best campaign. Public engagement is always the hardest, like when I'm amending the land use code and getting the word out, you know, backcountry zoning. Hey, you guys are amazing. It took me eight and a half years to do backcountry zoning, so. This is pretty awesome. But I I think that that's always a challenge, but I really think you guys are a great resource too for spreading the word. To all of your colleagues and letting them know that, you know, the next thirty days, we're going to have lots of great information out. If any of you think of places that we should shoot that out, send that out, let us know. Hope is Medina has also, I have sent her. All of our contractors because she's sending out. Educational opportunities already to everyone. She's including everyone. We we center her our database. So we'll just continue to try to find all of the ways to campaign and get the information out. Short of yard signs.
We have like eight Facebook, local Facebook pages. Where a lot of contractor services are sold.
Idea, Hope, yeah, anything that you have, I mean, this is your world, this is you, we're and we're your staff, so. Let us know if you have ideas of where we should be making sure there's information readily available and we'll jump on it. So that'll be something else that we're sending out, checking in with you and letting you know where we've engaged, what the campaign looks like. And welcome your input so that we make sure that that's as robust as possible. Great, great, great. Exciting toward it to be here. You know, I took.
It's been a long road, but I think we've done pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, and it's largely been all of your lifts. So thank you so much for making this part easy for me, so. But reach out anytime with ideas that we can make things better. We'll we'll work hard to get us there. So we'll stay in touch and I think I've got my follow up items. And I'll turn it back over to Luke.
All right. Breeze over, is there any new business that absolutely needs to be addressed right now?
Yeah, I want to thank Anne for her organization and follow through.
I'll second that. Thank you, Anne.
Shoot it right back at you.
Luke, I've got one thing and I do apologize, everybody. I I was caught up in work this afternoon. I couldn't. Couldn't join until just now. I had a little exchange with Anne about electric vehicle charging. And you had indicated to me that you thought it was in the twenty twenty one IECC, but I think it, I think it's been amended out of there.
Yeah, it's not in the twenty twenty one IECC. People are. What they're doing is they're including it in their adoption of the twenty twenty one. But it is not within it itself because that is outside of the scope for the IECC for the twenty twenty one. But there's an awful lot of ordinance out there that that people are working with and and going on that. So if that is something that you're interested in, I'm happy to send you what people are using, so.
Thanks, Hope. And, you know, I do apologize. I know it's kind of late in the game to be bringing up sort of a new topic of discussion. I i- in my day day job down here in Vail, I've been participating in the adoption of the twenty twenty one IECC here. And the the town is is going to be adding electric vehicle codes. Whether or not you think electric vehicles are a good idea, they are coming. And the benefit to including them in the code is that it's very expensive to go back after the fact. And add this type of infrastructure in, especially when you're looking at commercial multifamily buildings. With single family homes, it's usually not that big of a deal. Most single family homes are going to have a two hundred. And panel these days and you typically need like a fifty amp breaker to serve a level two charger. But on commercial multifamily, where you're talking about parking lots and commercial services. It it gets very expensive to go backwards and try and jam that infrastructure in later. I can send some some resources out to the board if people are interested. Not sure if it's a good idea to include it in our coded option or not, but, you know, I hate to see Leadville kind of get left behind. And that's why I bring it up. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that, but.
I know that my my electricians are encouraging people to do it now. And so most of the houses I'm doing already have provisions for that. It's usually not an actual active circuit, but it's a circuit that we're installing just in case later. And I I don't know if everybody's on board and doing that same thing, but it's super cheap to put it in now. And have it ready to go, so.
And that's what, Charlie, that's what most folks are calling, it's EV capable. So you've got a dedic, you've got a circuit that's reserved. You haven't necessarily run wire, but maybe you have a raceway. And yeah, people can add it in later and that's the approach that Town of Vale is going with. Based on the idea that if someone does get an electric car in the future. You know, whether if it's a Tesla, it's going to have a different charger than a different type of car. And they can decide at that point what type of charger to hardwire in.
Basically, the same.
Exactly, exactly.
With commercial, the Town of Vale is requiring ten percent of parking spaces, I'm sorry, five percent of parking spaces. This isn't official yet too, by the way, this is our draft policy, but five percent of spaces to be EV installed. So you actually have to put a charging station there and then twenty percent to be EV capable. So that's just reserving the spot in the in the service panel, running the conduit. For multifamily, that they're requiring, they're going to require ten percent of spaces to have. EV installed charger, charging infrastructure and then twenty percent capable, so for the future. So that's kind of the model language that's going in in here.
Yeah, I guess I appreciate you raising that. My my concern with that would be that it'd be hard to. Go through that in as much detail and length as we need to and still keep on this kind of timeline.
Could we steal it from them and just cut and paste?
I was just going to make that suggestion. A lot of jurisdictions down here, I have a group that I'm working with of ten communities. Yeah, out of this cohort and that's what they're doing is the. Their ordinance for the EV is pretty much pretty comparable to what they're doing. There's a little bit of difference on the percentages for multifamily for. Various, but for the most part, it's all the same. You know, and then you have contractors that are doing the exact same thing and they know what to do. It's good for consistency.
I I still think there's a certain amount of vetting that needs to be done. It's, you know, yeah, model code is an easy thing to find. But I'm I'm also thinking about this from the land use development. I mean, I'm I'm doing considerable amount of big development. And commercial development review where, you know, I'd also like to have the land use code be consistent. And be thinking about this. I I not that there doesn't stop anybody from, you know, from doing these things. And being mindful and bringing them into a development. It's just, and and to me. So my my two cents is I share concern that Luke has because this seems like a bigger, broader discussion. That may also involve land use as well and not just the building side of things and a consideration, but it doesn't exclude the possibility. Of properties being built, just like Charlie's already doing it and and other projects are already doing it. But I think making sure that we know how to require it might take just a little bit more of a lift. It's not that it it precludes it from happening. By any stretch of the imagination. I I don't know, so I mean, I'm just wondering about having a really thoughtful, meaningful conversation. So we don't just pluck a code, but we get one that. And also aligns with kind of our land use goals and different thoughts too. I I don't know.
I would even say, you know, as much as we can, I'd love to campaign for it and get some education out there and encourage it. Because I agree, it's it's a great approach, but I, you know, I just say trying to get it in the code at this point could be, could be a stretch.
Maybe just the electrical panel part.
Yeah, EV capable requirements are kind of the minimum, they're kind of the easiest to do, least burdensome. That sort of thing. Charlie, you had something too?
Well, I was just wondering if we could just get through what we're doing now and then kind of bring this up as a further discussion later. Is it modify, can we modify things later once we've adopted the what we're going for now? Or or should we look at putting provisions in now?
You could do an amendment. You could, you know, you could always do an amendment. We did an amendment. I are, we did an amendment to the thirteen resolution since we were here. And and some of you may recall that, Charlie, you probably do. We we did an amendment in the last eight years. Just to address some inconsistencies, so.
And and I think you brought up some good points too. Definitely does touch on like planning and zoning and. Especially in the commercial sector and in fact, some some municipalities actually have made requirements through their. Planning and zoning regulations instead of the building code. So it's definitely an alternative pathway. I think if you look at the mountain communities, Summit County, Eagle County. Most are putting in some some minimum requirements at this point. You know, I I definitely hear that it's late in the game. You know, I'd be curious to see what the commissioners, how they feel about it, since they're the ones who do the adoption. I mean, they that here here in the Town of Vale, the it's really coming from the town council. They wanted it in the in the language and that's why it's getting done. As a suggestion, why don't I send out to everybody? That that example language that, you know, the Town of Vale is going to adopt. There's some really comprehensive resources on the Colorado Energy Office website that I'll share out as well. I mean, this stuff gets complicated in a hurry, especially when you're talking about larger scale multifamily. But, you know, I I think to to the point that. Well, let's just kind of move, let's just get this done and then revisit it. I think there are benefits to, you know, we've been in this process for a long time. You know. I know it's one more thing, but it would be nice to get the code right for our community. Maybe this isn't right for our community, but. I think it's a good opportunity, especially when we're soliciting input and may make further revisions to at least consider it. You know, that way, if it is important to our community, we're we're not going to leave it behind.
And and the cost in retrofitting it after everything's built. I mean, we have a big building boom right now and the rail yard. Whole community, I mean, that's kind of what where a lot of this is going to happen too, so.
I'll share out some costs. There've been some studies where, you know, retrofitting it is like. You know, eight to ten times more expensive than doing it the first time.
Yeah, that's like.
Well, and I I I would know, I would also just suggest that we are right in the middle of doing. Potentially some some land use code amendments and so I think deciding where the best way to drive it is. Too, because we're writing a planning grant right now, more of a focus on affordable housing, but there may be, you know, some tie in there too, but. And you just, I just want to mention and Tim's on here, so he probably understands too that we have such an incredible work. A- and you just, I just want to mention, and Tim's on here, so he probably understands too, that we have such an incredible work plan. That's the only, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dismissive of anything. It's just that you have, the other thing is that we are always up against. Capacity and, and getting those things done, so I, I hear that it, it could be incredibly beneficial. So I think what I would like to hear is, do you want me to work with? Tim and the board and, and, uh, the city administrator. And CF Council and the board have an interest in this, it being included within the building code. Adoption, um, or would they consider it further down the road? I mean, is that where we're at? Do you want, you know, to, to? Find out that temperature or do you, we, we, is agreeable to, to consider it through an amendment process or? Just kind of direction.
I think what you just said sounds really reasonable, like just check the temperature. You know, if it's a no-go there, then let's not pursue it, but, you know, if, if that's something that the. Political leadership of the community is interested in, um. You know, we ought to take a hard look at it. That's my preference. Anyone else, please chime in. I don't mean to, to dominate it since, since I brought it up, but. Not offended if anyone disagrees. Charlie.
It's a good way to go.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the measures as well. Cameron, this is Ethan, by the way. Um. Is it being enforced through the IECC? Did I hear that?
It can be, so here in the Town of Vale, that's what's going to happen, but in other communities, and I'll send you a list. Uh, I've got a pretty good list of all these municipalities and the different ways that they're, uh, tackling this, so others are enforced in planning and land use. Um, especially when it comes to like commercial multifamily. So, yeah, there are different ways to tackle it, but what happened was it, it was originally considered for the. Twenty twenty-one IECC, and then it was, I think it was taken out under an objection that folks had in that process.
It, it was. It went through the appeal process and it lost. Um, but the one thing I want to caution, because I, I know you're bringing it up, Cameron, in their adoption of the twenty twenty-one. Um, a- and that's fine, but you also have to keep in mind too, that when you start talking about EV parking, you also have to talk about. Accessibility. The accessibility requirements are in the twenty twenty-one IBC in chapter thirty-one, but it's not in the. Twenty eighteen, so there, there will need to be some. Um, understanding and you're going to need to pull that, those requirements also into it, otherwise you can set yourself up for a lawsuit. So that's just my two cents and.
That's a good point. You're talking about ADA compliance and, um, yeah, it's a tricky, tricky issue.
You know, just hearing that, Hope, I, I feel, I just want everyone to realize that even if the political will is ready to have this discussion. This is going to, this is going to add time and a lift to where we're at, so I just. Ca- Cameron, how long has the city or the, the Town of Vale been working on this?
Um, we've had pr- probably two major discussions at kind of Board of Review level meetings. Plus, uh, staff time spent, so I, I've been working with the building official on, on our language. Um, so, yeah, there, there's time, there's time with it, but.
Your town council and, or have you had any, did you have to have engagement with the community? I mean, so it's just been two BOR meetings and. Staff time, or there's been a lot of weighing in before you even got to that point?
Um, that part is coming, the community engagement. Um, that being said, town council has already weighed in on it. Uh, essentially, so that's why it's happening. That's why it's going to be included in there, because that was the desire of town council.
Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure, because I think, you know, I've, I've heard a lot of interest in. In getting this done as quickly as we can, and so we just, I just want to be realistic about. Capacity and the ability to, to vet this properly and bring it up, and I'm also, when you bring up the ADA requirements, and I think about if you. Do something in the building code. I, you know, I'm the only planner for Lake County, and the city has no planner. So when I started thinking about this conversation, and I, and, and it's not about whether, you know, it's good or bad, it, this is about. Strictly capacity, knowing the city doesn't have anybody, because we need to have the city la- we have to have all, all coat the line, right? Um, I'm just, I'm just starting to think, boy, that's going to be a bit of a bigger, bigger discussion. So I just want, want everyone to know that, that you, you know, that, that may add some com- a, a considerable amount of time. And not just maybe one or two meetings more, but more.
Totally understood. Um, I don't want to delay the process. Um, I just thought it was too important to not bring up tonight and, um. Yeah, I do, do apologize for the kind of late, um. You know, addition of this, of this topic.
I think it's a great topic, Cameron. I'm really glad you brought it up, because I, whether it, whether it is included here or a future discussion, it's obviously going to be a future discussion.
So, maybe it's too early, um, and, yeah, maybe it could be done, done later, so it. E- either way, I just, just want to make sure I was on everybody's radar, and I will send some follow-up information, because I think it might be useful to folks. And, you know, I sounded like this board, you know, was in favor of checking the temperature, but, uh. You know.
Oh, I think.
Maybe it's too early to try and squeeze it into this code provision. I don't know.
I think that political will will be there and the political interest will be there. I'm talking about how, you know, how much work it's going to take to get it, to get us where.
Yeah.
We haven't just grabbed a model code and we haven't made sure that we properly aligned everything, so that it actually works.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, any other new business that we need to cover? We are. Right, with that in mind, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion? Second.
I'm in favor. Meeting adjourned at five forty-five.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing some material from you and go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Can you hold on for a second, Anne, before you, okay. So, Anne, uh, Nancy Bailey and I, you know Nancy, right? Yeah. We're doing the parklet. The bathroom, and I'm just seeing that, I can't find anything in the county assessors. I can't even find the visitor center there. To find the parcel information. Do you, lot size and everything that?
Did you, did you, um, it's, and it's not showing up on GIS?
No, I just put eight oh nine and nothing came in, because that's the address there, and so I was hoping, um. I don't have a lot size. I don't have any numbers, so.
Um, geez, that's a really good question, um.
I think we have it on file. I mean, there was a building built there.
Let me, you know, it's probably.
I don't know where to.
We, we might have something, um, let me, let me look into it tomorrow, Hope, and see what I can come up with, um.
Because I'll have to get a surveyor, and then I need to talk to you guys. Because, uh, you know, I hear this and that about, oh, it's, the building department's not going to be hard on you. I'm like, I think, yeah, they will. They're going to treat me the same, so what I need to know is exactly what they want to see, and it's been.
Do you have this?
Throughout the whole conversation so far, and we really need to get things down, so, you know, I need to know. Nancy's like, oh, you don't need an engineer design, and I was like, well, we're getting the design for the building. But I need the lot layout to know for the plumbing and the foundation, the concrete work. Where does the, where do the parking spaces, and I need to know the whole layout of that area and what I'm allowed to work with, so I can at least have a designer work. And then Greg and Nancy are telling me I don't need it to be engineered stamped. I don't believe that, so I'm talking to you guys. They're like, this is a project, and we're not going to, I was like, nah, that's not going to fly.
Right, yeah, yeah, so it sounds like you need to set some realistic expectations with them. Do you want to, do you just want to do like a design meeting? The other thing is, um, is, is there any, is there any zoning, uh, needed, since, since the city? It's just, this I actually don't know, um, whether, um, that it, it's a used by right by zoning, or does it need an entitlement process?
No idea. Idea, so, all I've gotten are the plans, and the reason I'm the general contractor is nobody will do it for that money. And I'm doing it because I love Leadville. I'm not going to make a single dime, because I have to pay for the plumbing. And all I'm getting is fifty thousand for this project. So paying all the workers and the plumbing, there's nothing for me, so this is literally a favor for me. Uh, to Nancy and the town and Greg, so I do need help, but I don't have all those answers. I don't do commercial. Buildings, but I'm the only one they have, so this is where we're at.
Okay, okay, well, why don't we, uh, do you have some time? Um, let's see, today is Wednesday. Do you, do you have any time?
I'm teaching BPI all week, uh, so next week I have, uh, time next week.
All right.
I need to get up.
You want to double-check your calendar? I can look at mine right now.
Yep.
Okay. Um, next week, I could, Tuesday looks pretty good for me. Wednesday afternoon. Thursday morning. And Friday all day doesn't, there, I actually have nothing on for April first. That must be an April Fools' joke.
Yeah, yeah, it'll pop up, uh, that morning. You'll be like, holy crap. Right, so Tuesday works for me, uh, all day. I've got that free.
Awesome, you want to do one?
Sure, one PM, oh, no, uh, yeah, I can do one PM. My, my fifteen-year-old is now in college, so I have to drive him throughout the week. At different times in the day and night to take college classes, so it's.
That's awesome, fifteen and, and doing college classes, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay, Hope, I've got you on my schedule for Tuesday, the twenty-ninth at one o'clock.
Yes, and if we can, maybe if you can search the records and see if you have anything on that property, um. You know, uh, Jerry, I don't know if you'd like to be there. I do have the plans, uh, for the bathroom.
Where is this?
This is. Center, the Main Street Parklet that is going in, in front of the visitor center, where that funky little mining structure thingy is.
Oh, right there by the church?
Uh, yeah, between the church and the Victorian. It's just that plot of, I think, grass or whatever. I don't know what is actually there, but. We're putting in a two-bathroom, uh, a watering station for dogs, a bench, and, uh, a bike rack. And then, but you got to get the plumbing drilled and everything, and I, you know, I have the whole team put together. Um, but I need to do the designs for, we've got the, uh, um, Romtech did all the design work, so we have all that. The building plans for the bathroom, the heating, all of that jazz is all done. But we don't have the plumbing and the foundation work, uh, for the, you know, the watering station going, meeting the sewer line, all of that.
And who's the owner of this?
Uh, the city of Leadville.
Yeah, they need to get all the, the plans, the design, the, it's got to be a state licensed plumber.
Yeah, no, I have all that, Jerry. What I don't have is the actual layout of the, the, the area. I need to find that. And I, I'm wondering, I'm asking if we have that, any records, so. I do have all the plans, engineered stamp plans. I have all of that. I have licenses, everybody, doing everything. Um, I also, even though I ask all these questions, I, you know, my CSLB is twenty eighteen, so I've taken all that classes, but. Uh, I just ask for other people that I know that, that, you know. Um, so, yeah, we have all the crew, we have all that, but what we need to do is figure out what you guys need from us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to Anne on that, if you guys are going to meet over there. Otherwise, I'd have to charge you consulting kind of thing. And, uh, I'm good with, if you've got all the plans right, then it becomes more just a planning and zoning thing for me.
Right, so, Anne, Tuesday, it looks like, good, thank you, Jerry, for that. So Tuesday, we can put together a tag list of. The things, names, whatever you need from me to move forward from this, and then maybe hopefully we can find something documented about that piece of property.
Sure, and I'll reach out, if I remember, I'll reach out to Lori Ty at the city. And just see, um, you know, she's attempting to try to assist with zoning things, so let me reach out to her. Um, I would imagine that, you know, she and the mayor are well aware of the EDC project, so. Um, I will reach out to her and just ask if, if there's any known zoning situation that we need to be, that you need to be concerned about.
Yeah, I don't know what Greg asked. The last meeting we had, uh, Greg said everybody was on board. Everybody keeps saying everyone's on board. I'm like, I don't know what the heck. That means, it's, it doesn't mean anything to me.
Oh, just got the magic fairy dust. You're going to come in and just sprinkle it and everything's going to be perfect.
Name's at the bottom of the bucket, so that's why I don't want that to happen, so, yeah.
Sounds good, yeah, but I've got you on, on Tuesday at one o'clock, and I'll reach out to Lori and, um, just, you know, check things like setbacks and. Things like that.
All right, thanks so much. Talk to you Tuesday, Anne, uh, Anne, or maybe next week about my house too. I submitted a bunch of those permits.
Okay, sounds really good. Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys have a good evening.